Really feeling. I'm not feeling on top of the world, so I may not stay. I didn't give you notice of that.
All right, well, that stinks.
He's not feeling great.
Okay, will you hang in there, you know, take off when you need to?
Should it?
What's a quorum? Four?
Four, it's got to be four because we have seven members.
Yes, so we do have more than a quorum. So we can get started. Are we waiting for anyone else, Kelsey, that you know?
Nope.
Paul Ingalls is not here.
There was a possibility that.
Oh, sorry, there's a, there was a possibility he would join, but he's at a conference.
That's right, yeah.
At the double trade. Dinner, conference dinner, kind of a thing. And Paul Connor is on vacation this week, so zero Pauls.
Oh, that's right, yeah, he's down in.
Wow, that makes it easy. Okay, so we're after seven. We have more than a quorum. We're missing Pauls, both Pauls. And Michael is joining us online. So we can jump right in. So for those of you in the room, for an exit, you can go out the back of the room, either door and out the hallway either direction to exits. Does anyone have any agenda changes? Okay. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Do we have any? Okay, go ahead. You can state your name.
Hi, Ryan. Michael, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Ryan Doyle, I think most of you know me at this point. So after last week's meeting, I, I spoke to the Secretary of State to clarify some state law. Because Helen is not a member of the Planning Commission, and she hasn't actually been voted on yet. Executive session to appoint members of boards. The decision has to be made in open session, and reason has to be given. That's Vermont State Statute subsection 313. So theoretically, Helen shouldn't actually even know that the council has appointed her yet. Because there has not been an open session to do so. So really Helen should be just participating if she wants to as a citizen, as a member of the public, until that time when the council does appoint her. And it should not be done on the consent agenda, because that does not provide for discussion or for providing reasons. The Secretaries of State office was very confused by the city's policy on appointments. The other thing that struck me as really bizarre is that since you, Jessica, wrote to the City Council, letting them know that there could be more diversity in the appointments. You mentioned, I believe, that there could be younger people, people with children, people who rent. The City Council since then has only appointed people who are retired. And only people who have made campaign contributions to sitting counselors who are making the decision, and at no point have those conflicts of interests been presented. I was hoping Tim would be here to consider those things and try to make amends. I will email him in writing about that. But in general, this is very concerning to the public that these executive session violations have been going on for so long in the city. And the very insular way in which appointments are made, not just in the obvious people who know each other, but specifically people who are giving contributions. Of the last eight planning commissioners, only three haven't given contributions prior to their appointments, Jessica Duncan and Donna. So I didn't go back much further than that in my research. After that became apparent to me this afternoon, because there's only so much time and I like to get into the LDRs much more. People, I don't want to misconstrue that people can make, absolutely make contributions to candidates that they like and to causes that they like. That's very important. That is part of free speech in our country. The issue comes in when that conflict isn't managed in a public way and dealt with appropriately at the council level. So I will be emailing Tim and Jesse about that tomorrow and about their appointment strategy and changing that to be compliant with state law. But for today at least, Helen will need to sit in the audience and participate just as an audience member for the sake of legal compliance. And hopefully, Tim will work out an appropriate form of appointment on the May 6th meeting. Are there any questions about that? I do have some of those printed out here.
Okay, I've. Are you okay with sitting in the audience? Yeah, I might know, so I apologize. I probably didn't handle that correctly at the last meeting. We knew that the appointment was not official until May 6. So we made it clear that Helen wasn't participating in voting, but we did have her sit up here for the conversational piece. So it probably makes sense.
And some of that's, you know, the communication from staff and council and their misunderstanding.
I think so. Tim did let us know that he's out of town right now, so he is our liaison. So I think that that's probably best to. A lot of what you just talked about is really out of our purview.
I'm well aware, yes.
I think that you know, it's hard to make a correlation between contributions and appointments, because I think there's a lot of overlap in general with people who are very much just involved with our city and volunteering. So, you know, there may not be a direct link. Those might just happen to both be true because of the people who are involved and volunteering and aware of what's going on in the city, so. You know, it's not, and as you pointed out, it's not everyone, so.
Right, it's the, just the matter of publicly addressing the conflict.
No, I think that makes sense. Thank you, Helen, and thank you for your attention to the way things should be handled.
And I'll save my LDR comments to like come up.
Very good. Okay. With that, we will keep going on announcements. Does anyone else have any announcements?
It's Earth Day.
Very exciting.
I don't know if we needed that announcement, but I didn't know until late in the day.
Okay, I don't think I have any announcements. We just, anything else from staff this week?
Nope, nothing between last week and this week really to, to report.
Okay, then we are going to dive right back in. So item five, it is continued LDR updates. We did get an updated packet. But in general, we are going to pick back up where we left off at the last meeting. We had made it partway through the discussion on inclusionary zoning and transferable development rights. And we're getting kind of late in the evening and felt like it would make sense to kind of table the discussion until this meeting, so. We were, you know, kind of on the red question about the value of TDRs. On page, it was five of our packet. Kind of. Page it is now. Partway through.
Page two, I think, no.
On page two of our packet this week.
Page two of the memo. It's numbered two. It is in the greater packet, page five.
Okay, well, generally says the commission has discussed this value, which is the value of TDRs conceptually. And we were going to pick back up for that discussion. So we had talked quite a bit at the last meeting, hadn't made any firm conclusions.
Do we need any re-table setting from me, or are we in good shape?
I guess my, what was the, where did 2,000 square feet come from? What was the?
So the, the logic behind that is the, we've talked in the past in other discussions of TDRs of effectively a one-for-one units shift, and that would be generally, if we're moving TDRs to only be applicable in large, larger buildings, 2,000 square feet was a good approximation of the size of a unit plus its sort of proportional share of other spaces in the building, you know, utility areas, common spaces, other things. So maybe it's a 1,400 square foot, three-bedroom apartment, but you know, there's another 600 square feet in the stairway and the hallway and other things like that. So that was, that was our reasonable approximation. I will say that that's, that's the logic behind that number. It does value a TDR at approximately one apartment unit. So it would be up to the commission if you wanted to make the value of a TDR higher or lower than that number. And the resulting, you know, economic impacts of the price of TDRs and all of that would, would change a bit based on that value. Receiving value.
Michael, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I had a question about the, on page, I'm not sure what page it is. There's this statement that because of the higher development potential without using TDRs, lots in the SEQ that would have been sending properties now have significant development potential on a much smaller land area. Do they have, is that saying they have more development potential?
Oh, this is what I think we, we got, we kind of got sidetracked by this at the end of last meeting. It's probably not clear. It's the idea that S100 mandates that by the, the multiple units per acre zoning, whereas right now it's 1.2 units per acre. So the by law, by right, the, the land that's developable has a higher development potential. That's what that's saying.
Yeah, it's not mandated, it's allowed up to five.
Yes, by this, by the new state law. That's, that's, I guess, what the word mandate.
I kind of didn't understand the arithmetic, you know, a small, a smaller parcel will have fewer 0.83 acre TDRs than a larger parcel. You know, if it's 10 acres, you're going to have 12 TDRs. If it's five acres, you're going to have six TDRs. So I'm not sure.
So Michael, I think that the difference is the, the number of TDRs versus the actual development potential under our, the proposed new regulations. The number of TDRs would be set as how it had been previously because it had been calculated as an approximate compensation for the regulations from 2005, 2006 that brought in the NRP. It does, the number of TDRs on a property does not directly, is not directly connected with actual development potential on the property today.
Okay, and then we go on to say that the commission has proposed the TDR program grant sending TDR only to lots with little or no potential development potential. Well, that doesn't make sense either, because the TDR is actually the development potential. That's what you're transferring. So I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with this whole section. I don't have the the energy right now to, to go through it, but I have some concerns that we're, we're undoing something piecemeal and we don't have an overall picture of, of the impact of all these things that we're discussing. I think we're on, on a road to confusion. At least, I feel it that way. Maybe it's because I'm not well, because I've got a bad cold and sinusitis and all the rest of it, and my head is full of cotton wool. But I'm very uncomfortable with, with this.
Michael, can I, can I add something here?
Yes.
Jessica, you can correct me if I'm off, but we, we had a discussion about, there, there are a number of properties in the SEC where through ACT or S100, they're getting development rights. They're getting five acres a unit. Or five, five units an acre. So the idea was that those properties shouldn't also be given TDRs. That was kind of, we thought that was kind of double dipping. They have the development potential is available to them through S100. So to also give, have them use TDRs seemed not fair, for lack of a better term. And we felt it would be defensible to say, we are not going to grant TDRs to those property because there is development potential. Whereas the properties that don't have the development potential, don't have any sewer water connections, any of that stuff, we still wanted to give the TDRs to those folks. So that, that's, I think that's what that paragraph is talking about. Is parsing out the, the pieces of property that shouldn't be getting TDRs because they got the development rights through S100. Versus the ones that stood, should still get them because they don't have any development potential. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's all very well, but if you look at some of the the easement documents that we, we have, it says that if the rules change in such a way that would allow a landowner additional TDRs, they would have to, they'd have to figure out how to, how to do that. It was never, never clearly stated, but I can dig up the text if you want. I don't know whether we're, you know, it's, it's, they're lucky that that S100 was passed, but as you say, it gives them additional opportunities for, for development. They're not limited to 1.2, they, they can go up to five.
So I think.
They should be the beneficiaries of the new, new law, not be, not be punished for it.
I don't think we're saying anyone would be punished. I think that this, I think we need to, the way that it's written is maybe, you know, it's just in paragraph form there for our discussion today, but I think maybe looking at the mapping, kind of reviewing what it actually looks like on the map and like some of like specific scenarios might be really helpful. So maybe we need to do that at one of our next meetings to, to really see what this is looking like. Because it's maybe not super clear in the red line out version, because some of it's mapping.
Yeah, and we do have our, our sort of order out for mapping, hoping to have it for the May 14th for the next planning commission meeting.
Yeah, so, so Michael, it's a big deal because you're right. It would be, it's changing, it's, it's changing how a property would get value, either by having more developed on the property versus being able to sell development to another location. So it's. And I, I think we need to make sure we can like describe it in a way that everyone will understand what we're talking about. So it is really quite clear.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just suggesting we shouldn't make any hard and fast rule changes until all seven commissioners can stand up and say they understand exactly what the new rules are and that they are comfortable with it, and that we can have a unanimous motion to amend the LDRs accordingly. Without that, I think we're going to be in a mess.
Yes, and I think we need the mapping to be able to have that really clear discussion, because it's a lot of that is map changes.
Yeah.
We'll need to review, but it is a big change. And, you know, I think we were talking about different ways of kind of reducing the number of TDRs that are out there, and that was one of the ideas. And, you know, if the group isn't comfortable with that, we don't need to move forward with it. But it seems like it's at least one option on the table for discussion right now.
Well, Jessica, there are two sides to that coin. You can reduce the number of TDRs available, or you can increase the market that's available for TDRs. And yeah, well. Right now, we're not doing that. Because saying only, only, they can only be used in certain, in, in, in a commercial district, in a few of them. It's just, I just think we need to be very sure that we're not doing something that has unintended consequences, either by reducing the available market for TDRs or making it very difficult to to make use of TDRs and get that extra density where we want it. There were a few other things that I had in mind, but I think I'm not, I'm not going to raise them tonight. I, I need to be in a, in a better place.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense, Michael. So we set aside time at one of our upcoming meetings to like bring out new ideas. So if you have some other suggestions on where we could use TDRs to expand the market for them, that would maybe be a really good thing for that discussion. So if you have some ideas on that as you start to feel better, sending them to Kelsey to get on that agenda would be great.
Jessica?
Yeah.
I think also it would be very helpful to be able to, once you have the mapping, for us to be able to see from, you know, once we adopt, once we adopt the current changes from S100, that, you know, what would be the available TDRs in the future from properties, you know, from specific properties, you know, it's like, you know, the ones that haven't been issued yet. Because I don't know, I don't know which properties have other than the farms and maybe some places that have been taken off the market. I assume those do, but not having the history of this, I don't know like which TDRs have been issued and then which ones going forward after these changes, where would those be?
So Donna, we'll be able to show you where the proposed changes to what properties would have TDRs remaining under the regulatory structure would be. It is likely not appropriate to go property by property and say they've sold theirs, they still have some, they've been severed from here. Because what we, what we cannot do is spot zone, and we cannot sort of go property by property and say, you get them, you don't, you get them, you don't. It has to be a blanket policy. So the mapping.
You know, just kind of.
Yeah, the mapping is intended.
Plized examples.
Right, so we showed a.
Get a better understanding of it.
We showed a rough meeting, a rough map a few meetings ago of, here are some examples, like off of the east of Heinsburg Road, there was a few properties back there that have development in a single-family home, a low-scale neighborhood, and then a, a long back property. So those were some examples that we showed at a previous meeting, kind of with our like in-house rough mapping. What we're working on now is getting some, some better, the better mapping that's, that's more precise and, and better coded and everything else. But what we, what we can't do and what we, we can't come through and say like, they would have had 150 and they sold 47 of them, like we can't go property by property and, and evaluate that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't assuming that.
I'm just, I'm just making sure that, that we're all aware with that the discussion is about a blanket policy, not about, you know, this person, that person, this person, that person.
Okay. Oh, Michael, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, the city has a conservation easement for every TDR or group of TDRs that were severed. And that is the record of TDRs that, that should be there. That's the official record. And if they're missing, or if we don't have it.
We have the information, it's, we have that information in our registry of deeds. That should not be considered as, oh, these people had it, but they sold it, so then it's okay that we took it away from them because it's already gone. It's, it needs to be a blanket.
We have a list of, a list a record of all the TDRs that have been severed, and that's where they, that's probably where you can find it.
I'm saying we do have that information. That is not something that needs, that should, we have the numbers and we have the totals. But sort of who has sold them and who has not sold them and for, you know, at what point or what, what's remaining is not necessarily appropriate for this policy level discussion.
Okay. I'll just.
So do we, so we were talking about that 2,000 square foot kind of equivalent value per TDR. Does that seem like a reasonable size to go with that concept of either footprint or height?
Yeah, we, we figured it was, it would represent, it'd be equivalent to a normal dwelling. And I, I thought we'd actually accepted that.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure, because it was towards the end of our last meeting and it sounded like people still had some questions. So are we on board with straw poll of the 2,000 square feet? Okay. So we'll keep that in there for now. And then the next question was about table 19-1, where it talks about for both or either inclusionary zoning and the use of TDRs, kind of how much of what you could get kind of from either of those programs with the bonuses.
And just a, a quick technical apology. We used to be able to co-host, and I could control what was on the screen from this computer. It appears that Zoom has had an update and now I can't do that, and I didn't find that out until now, so I'm not able to be in here and share to the screen. So if anyone on the commission wants to do that, that would be, that would be great. Otherwise, I can try a, a different workaround.
Yeah, otherwise we need to just find 19-1 by yourself.
Right.
Yep, Michael?
Can I say one last thing and then I'll, I'll probably bail? In the section on, in the memo, in the section on inclusionary zoning, at the end, there's a, there's a sentence that says there is an additional option to add more bonuses to this system, including additional lot or building coverage. And says it should be discussed. I, it's something I think we should leave in the TDRs, but not put into the inclusionary zoning. This is one of the, one of the few remaining areas where TDRs can be used on in a more general sense. So I don't think, if we, if we add it to inclusionary zoning, it's gone for TDRs. So something that you, you, I'd like the, the commission to talk about, and I will now get out of your hair.
Okay.
Feel better, Michael.
Feel better, Michael. Thanks for tuning in.
Okay.
Okay, so we continue to have a quorum with the four of us present up here, so we will continue the meeting. Michael has hopped off, so. Kelsey, it seems like Michael's suggesting adding a follow-up discussion on additional ways to use TDRs.
So in the, actually in the memo, and I'm trying to find where that was. It's.
It's not in red.
No. I think it's under inclusionary. Oh, no, it is at the, it's right after the bulleted, bulleted list in the inclusionary at the beginning of the section. So there's a bulleted list about inclusionary and how that process works. It's on page five of the packet two of the memo. And the, the sentence says, there's an additional option to add more bonuses to this system, meaning the inclusionary system, including additional lot or building coverage. This should be discussed. Could have been in red, wasn't, we missed it being in red. The idea is the inclusionary zoning units, like including more affordable units gets you certain bonuses. We've structured it so it mirrors the state bonuses for the additional floor. TDRs, you have to purchase, but you get similar bonuses. You can, you can use it to get an additional floor, but you can also use it to get lot and building coverage. And we've structured the maximums to be the, using the combination of the two. You could use all inclusionary, you could use all TDRs, but the maximum lot coverage, building coverage and height is, is set that you could use the combination of the two. The intention for this is for transparency, especially for neighbors, that, you know, it doesn't really matter to someone going past a building or living near a building or series of buildings. If, if the developer used inclusionary zoning or TDRs to get a certain size of building, they just know that that's the maximum size it could be. So that's why they've sort of been paired together. Michael's right that as it's written, inclusionary units and adding more inclusionary units does not give you additional lot or building coverage the way that the TDRs could. I would say I don't agree with him saying if you. Um, I would say I don't agree with him saying if you, it would go away if it's included in inclusionary. You could say that it's, you get, you can get the same bonuses as in, as the TDR structure. If you have more than the minimum, more than the min- minimum mandatory number of units, so you could structure it so it's not automatic. Um, but it was just another way to say, to encourage developers to in, put in more inclusionary units than they may be. Required to do. Um, if maybe they don't care about an additional flight, an additional floor, maybe they've already maxed out their additional floors and they want to go a little bit bigger on the building. Um, you could have a developer who includes more inclusionary units to get that. Or chooses to do, pay for TDRs, or does a combination of those two things.
Okay, well, I think Michael's suggestion was that um you could only use TDRs. To get the additional lot or building coverage.
What, which part? For the inclusionary, yes. Yeah, so it, so the way it's currently written, you could get, you would get an additional floor for hitting the the different threat, the thresholds. For inclusionary. Um, we've written it that you could also buy TDRs to get another floor, so if say what, five, six, seven. Um, but you could also buy TDRs to go out. Um, so additional. Lot building coverage and lot coverage. So building coverage, just to be totally clear, building coverage is the building itself or other structures. Lot coverage includes things like driveways, parking lots, stormwater um features that are impervious, et cetera. Um, mostly, it's mostly it's parking and access. Um. So T, we we can ha- we could give credit under the inclusionary system for lot or building coverage. Um, the way that we do for TDRs, that's, that's possible. We wouldn't be taking it away from one or the other.
To me, to me, it seems reasonable. Michael, Michael sug- so basically what's in there currently. For inclusionary makes sense to me. It also makes sense to me to have lot or building coverage be associated with TDRs. Because the whole point of the TDR is about land area. It's about conserving land area. So you're trading land area from the area you're trying to conserve to land area within your area you're developing. So it feels reasonable to use only the TDRs to get the additional footprint space. Um, you know, considering that. As written, the inclusionary bonuses meet the requirements. And they are what was um recommended us by the Affordable Housing Committee. So.
So the only other thing they include, the Affordable Housing Committee did um bring up was making, trying to. Figure out a way to encourage developers to do more than their mandatory. So the way that it's structured now, like they get what they get for the, for meeting those minimums. Um, but if someone decided to do twice as many, they don't really get much extra. So that was, that was part of what the Affordable Housing Committee was concerned about is you'd have a lot of buildings that met the minimum. And there's no incentive for developers to do more than that. We have other things that we can do to ince- like incentivize developers, things like um some of the fees, wa- waiving fees for affordable units and and things like that. That are more financial than strictly land use regulatory. Um, but this was just one thing that we floated is giving, giving more value to additional inclusionary units. But again, this is, it, any, any way you slice it is, is, is fine by staff. It's up to the commission what you want to uh give additional value for.
Okay, any um questions or concerns with table nineteen one, which is kind of the, the maximums?
Takes about five minutes.
I don't know.
Section nineteen at the very bottom. So Jessica, real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you were, and if I understand what Michael was saying, what you were just proposing, you wanted to allow extra. Lot coverage only through TDRs. And you were saying that that's was possibly an incentive that could be used if somebody goes above.
It was something that we had brainstormed on the staff end as, as something you could give. Also for more inclusionary units, that you could give that additional building or lot coverage to encourage people to do more than the, the minimum. Five to twenty, five units, twenty percent, ten percent, whatever the number is.
Yeah.
But it's just one option of many.
Reason I was saying it, and I don't know, want to put words in Michael's mouth, but I know he was saying he was just concerned about not having enough of a market for TDRs. Um, it is something I'm concerned about too. I want to make sure we have enough. Basically receiving areas, receiving options.
At one point, we talked about expanding it in the commercial districts. At this point, what, we haven't really done that, have we?
Not in the past, but this language would do that. This would put it into um. The higher use, mixed use that number three district. So it would be C one auto, C one LR, C two, C one air. Makes commercial, industrial. So this would do that. Yeah, for um, you know, the lot coverage and the footprints and height. So for those three things in those districts.
So was it intentional, just under the zoning district three? Where the maximum allowable building coverage increases from ten to twenty percent? And then the maximum allowable lot coverage is increased by ten percent.
Yes.
Is that, is that?
Yes.
That's intentional?
Mm-hmm. Yep, it was intentional um because the in, the intention was the lot coverage has a lot more to do with the impervious. Cause the building coverage is counted as part of your total lot coverage. So if you increase the size of your building. You're kind, you can take away from some of your parking, access, whatever, and still have the same total um impervious footprint. Where increasing the lot coverage increases directly the impervious surface. So we were saying, don't allow so mu- uh, don't allow as much increase for lot coverage. Because policy-wise, we don't want to keep going out to, you know, ninety percent or something of lot coverage. Um, but allowing more of that lot coverage to be building, that's fine.
Okay.
Or it's more, it's more fine up to a certain number.
Well, and it, and it.
I also managed to share. Look, I did it. It's on the screen.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking, yeah, nice.
Is, is um zone one in there?
Sorry, these are the old numbers um from, that's, one is low scale neighborhood. It is not included. Um, because you would not be um.
They're not receiving areas?
Correct. And they, and most of them have never been. So the R one, two, four, et cetera, have never been receiving areas.
Um, any other comments on this section? Um, right?
Ryan Doyle speaking. Uh, I wish Michael were still here so he could hear me agree with him two weeks in a row. Um, I, I, I agree that it's really important to provide more value to those TDRs. And I also remember at a meeting last year where Michael asked, well, why don't we have? The area north of Williston Road, uh, just the adjacent section here, um, have an eight-story limit. And when we look at um agglomeration and the way that people sort of. Merge their way into a central area, it usually spreads out in all directions. But there are some places in the city where we have really hard limits of where people can spread past. Um, north of Williston Road, there's a big wetland there. So there's just essentially a narrow area between Williston Road. And, and those gullies and wetlands where you can't have a greater extent of people. Working their way into the agglomeration center at city center. So there's a benefit in a space like that on the edge to allow for an even higher maximum allowable height. Because it supports agglomeration, it supports higher density, and those spaces then can help make those TDRs more valuable. The other two places why I would see that most prominently featured would be the back half of the U-Mall lot. Highways are noisy, there's a lot that's unpleasant about them. But again, it's a barrier where people can't just slowly get in at that half mile, three quarter mile range to city center. So you essentially have this wall there. You can actually make higher buildings there. They will have fewer impacts on neighbors, the buildings themselves, and it helps again. Beef up the number of people in that agglomeration area at the edge. The last would be in the uh Fayette Road area to the west of Shelburne Road. We have the railroad tracks that really block off this area that's really. Uh, you, some of it's starting to develop, but there's a really huge potential to do a lot of bigger development there. And it would be far enough away from the smaller residential areas that it doesn't create the same negative problems of being too high. And we have the railroad tracks making a really strong buffer, both from the infrastructure and the surrounding um gullies. That allow you to have, again, there's a wall there and you can really stock up um more height. And support agglomeration. And if we look really far into the future, you better chances of having a very light rail. Transit stop uh in that section of town if we go out thirty, forty years, if I can get you guys to think that far ahead. So those are three areas where I think, I know they don't neatly fit your zoning structure, but I do think those areas could. Comfortably receive a higher maximum allowable height. Um, to make the TDRs more valuable and to help the agglomeration factor there.
So just as a point of clarification, a lot of, not the Shelburne Road um ones, but the, a lot of the other areas you're talking about are actually in the form-based code area. Um, so this does not apply in form-based code because there's a different system of heights. So it's a um, a different, it's, it's a good discussion to have, it's just not related exactly to these. This whole system. Um, so we're going through a separate project that's not related to S one hundred because of the, there's, some of the density stuff doesn't apply. In form-based code. Um, it's kind of next on the agenda for the planning commission after S one hundred is. Um, we're going, we have a consult, an architectural consultant working on some of those um form-based code related things. Um, so coming attractions in probably July, June, July. So that'll, that's, that's one of the next things coming up is, is discussion of some of those, those things. Um, including maximum allowable height in the form-based code.
Yeah, no, I think tho- those are, those are good comments, and I think that it's a really um important note that table nineteen dash one does not cover. All areas of the city.
Correct.
Um, but I think this framework we're working on might be able to like extend potentially into form. Depending how that works and we can just wait and see.
Yeah, form-based code is, is um a little different just because of the way that lot and building coverage and heights are all regulated. They have the transects and everything else. It's a little, just the structure is different than, than in the rest of the city. So it would, it's, it's kind of a different question that we haven't, we haven't really dove into because it's, it's not applicable for the TDRs at the moment.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Do you, how, you had some questions on the numbers. Were you okay with them the way they are for him? The twenty percent versus the ten percent?
Oh, not in this table, I don't think.
Okay. Well, actually, I think that was the, isn't that the twenty percent that you ask about?
Think that was Donna.
Oh, it was Donna who asked, okay. Okay, any, um, I guess a straw poll. Are you generally in favor of this table moving forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, why? Okay, straw poll passes.
Not to throw a wrench in the works, but the other, we, we did discuss as on the staff end. Whether, uh, it relates to Donna's question, that's just why I wanted to bring it up, is the relationship between lot coverage and building coverage. And if you wanted to go higher on the building coverage, because it wouldn't be affecting impervious, it would just be increasing the. The building bulk. Um, so it's just a little bit of a different question than, than the lot coverage. Um, because it would just be a, a bigger percentage. So say the lot coverage was fifty percent and the building coverage was, was thirty. Like you could move it up. Anyway, it's just something that it's not, there's some room potentially in the building coverage. Um, that doesn't affect, that affects aesthetics and sort of the visual impact of a building. Um, but not necessarily the environmental impact. Just going back to Donna's question and adding a little bit more, just more to chew on bef- wh- in this, in this section as we move forward.
Okay, anything else in this section before we would move on to fifteen, section fifteen?
On table nineteen dash two, um, I guess, is that one of the areas that we still haven't really come to a conclusion on? Is it two thousand square feet? Because in the, in the table nineteen dash two, it's listed as twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, so that's, that's two different versions of, of uh internal staff conversations about whether it should be a little bit more or a little bit less. Um, we landed on recommending two thousand, um, but the table is a little bit older. The red line table is just, just a, a week or two older than the memo. Um, what, what we were. What we're really thinking about is if you want a TDR to have more value and a TDR to be more likely to be purchased by a developer. Allowing it to have more applicable, mo- uh, more value on the receiving end makes that more likely. Then again, not an economist, that could make the price for the, for the TDR go up. And then it's, we're back where we were, that, you know, instead of a ten thousand dollar TDR for two thousand square feet, if you move the value to. Five thousand square feet, you might have a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollar TDR. It may not be a direct thing that you increase the value and the number of TDRs that get sold increases. Um, but it is something the city can try and see what happens in, in the market, see what people are willing to sell their TDRs. Um, for and what developers are willing to, what value on a receiving property. Teed, uh, developers see as worthwhile to, to buy a TDR. So those, that sort of, that two thousand, twenty-five hundred is, is a. An example of that conversation that was, that was had on the staff recommendation side. Um, it's similar to the conversation that was had about a year ago about whether, when it was, when we were talking about units. Whether it would be worth one unit or two units um on the receiving end. And the commission landed on it being one, one for one instead of one for two or three. Um, in all areas of the city, because that conversation was had about whether it should be worth more in a higher density area to try to direct them to certain parts of the city. Um, this is the sort of square feet version of the same, of the same conversation. So that's why we landed on recommending two thousand, because it reflects the commission's discussion from about a year ago of wanting it to be a kind of a one unit for one unit. Um, trade instead of a one unit sold and two units received, if it was more like four thousand or five thousand.
Okay. We ready to move on to the article fifteen then? Let's go back to the memo. Okay, do we, um, is there anything you need to tell us, Kelsey, on this?
So most of the explanation is in the memo. Um, there, uh, cur- I mean, the way to really frame it is article fifteen. Has, was created and has been edited at various times by various different commissions. Um, as such, there's a, there's a good amount of confusion, especially on the development review and about. Things like submission requirements or timing or, you know, should I be a PUD or should I be a subdivision? And when can I do this and when can I do that and what does that result in? And we're really working through trying to make that a lot more usable and a lot more clear. Um, this is also paired with the inclusion of the master planning process um that, that came in a few years ago. Um, and trying to make that better integrated with the current subdivision and PUD uh standards. Cause we were in a situation where I went and I was reviewing everything. There would be a section in, for major subdivision and a section in PUD and a section in master plan. And they were all kind of trying to go, trying to go towards the same goal, but were written slightly differently in a way that there's. You could find a way through and, and maximize what you wanted as a developer. Or um, or whatever outcome you were looking for and try to use the tools to do that. So the main idea for this is as part of this LDR update, working on the structure. And the um clarity of these, the three A, B and C, fifteen A, B and C together. Um, to really be, be more transparent and more clear in how those regulations are used. Um, yeah, so the sp- specific things that are being, that are, we're proposing. And we've been working on are in the memo. That's on page six of the packet, page three of the memo, starting there and going through. I'm, I don't need to sort of reiterate everything that's in the memo, but if there are questions, concerns. Um, clarification that you, that you'd like from us, we intentionally didn't. we intentionally didn't provide redlined language because we're still working out a few of the, a few of the details, more than a few of the details. And also, we're looking for some feedback from the commission that you're, you're generally comfortable with this, with this direction and we can kind of continue into the weeds of specific language.
I do. I just had a question about, I guess the recommendation, or maybe this is getting into the weeds.
That's fine.
About eliminating the conservation PUD. Is if, if you eliminate the conservation PUD, what would be the incentive to do more cluster type development? That doesn't seem to be included in the other types of PUDs? Or is that just a general PUD kind of encourages a more cluster type development?
So what, what we would end up, what we're proposing to do is because of S-100 and the state requiring that five units an acre minimum, maximum density, we would be redrawing the lines through the, in the properties that would be, would have been now subject to conservation PUDs, redrawing the borders of the NRP and designating the water and sewer service area on one side and the conservation area on the other side. So it's effectively the, doing the job of the develop, what's currently the job of the developer, the city would do. And so you're forcing the concentrated development onto just the water and sewer service area side.
I understand that, that's not really the question.
Okay.
Question really has to do with instead of dividing the remaining parcel up into, into, you know, five thousand square foot lots, the idea of doing more, more development where you have more clusters of multi-unit, which, which have different lots. I mean, the lot, they're not necessarily all five thousand square feet. You may have a lot of, you know, even single-family homes that are butted, you know, two, three, four together. You know, where they're, they, they become more like multifamily. I'm just thinking about neighborhoods that I've seen traveling, you know, where you have, you have a good bit more, more of clustered development than single-family lots or, or just lots. You know, and it, the, the whole structure and kind of quality of the neighborhood changes quite a bit because a PUD is by nature, it looks more planned. It looks, the units may be more similar. It, it looks like a, I don't know what the term would be, but it, it looks like a community versus a bunch of houses, you know, on single lots.
I would say currently, the conservation PUD does not do that. The TND does. The, the traditional neighborhood development has a lot of design standards about, you know, the size of lots and cottage courts and where they face and a mix of housing types and all these things. The PUD doesn't, the conservation PUD does not have the same level of design requirement as the TND does. So this would not be affecting the TND structure. So where a TND is required or optional, that would still be something that would be required or optional. And that would be again up to the commission. But this is, this is just the conservation PUD part that, that is not necessarily, doesn't include the things that you're, that you're talking about.
Well, which one does?
The TND.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
That's just not, that's not what the TND was, but, okay.
So part of, part of the distinction was that for the, for, when we were mandating a property, use the conservation PUD, we were acknowledging that we were pretty much forcing them to give up seventy percent of the land and they were only allowed to then use the remaining thirty percent. So we wanted to try to be as flexible as possible because we were already putting such a big burden on the land. So, so one of the things we talked about was that a landowner could choose to use the TND structure in that thirty, the development area if they wanted.
I guess, I guess the, the issue that I have is that I've always seen the TND as being, you know, single-family and duplexes largely. And, you know, not, not really getting into the, the type of cluster development that is, you know, seen as very desirable, you know, because it's more planned. You know, I guess even O'Brien, I don't think is, I mean, still, you know, they're, they're all single, they're, they're individual lots, you know, so it's not, it doesn't fit to me. Even though it's a very planned community, it doesn't look like a planned community. It looks like a bunch of single-family and duplexes.
So we've actually not had a TND applied for. The, the O'Brien project was permitted before the, the TND was, was established. We've had proposals come in, but nothing has gotten to the permitting stage. And I will say that the, the plats of proposed areas that I've seen that have been using the PND, the TND are more like you're, like you're talking about. Like there are requirements for sort of back alley for parking and garages and front-facing pedestrian focused onto the street, centralized greens or public spaces. There's a, a mix of multifamily and single-family and duplex and whatever mix among that. There's, there's a lot of standards in the TND percentages that you have to allocate to different land use types and commercial and, and open space. There's, there's a lot of numbers and nuts and bolts that were all discussed during the IZ process. It was right before I started here. But a few commissioners were, were here for that process. And there's, there's a lot of requirements that the intention is to create exactly what you're talking about. The more clustered, more mixed, more varied, more community-focused neighborhood and not just a string of single-family home lots.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it, it goes to the whole idea of having a designed community, you know, and you read about these designed communities that survived the hurricanes because it was, you know, it wasn't just leaving it up to the builder to build any old kind of house that they wanted. They were building, you know, a community of very sustainable units. Now, I understand that most of the development that happens now is all one builder. You know, they're, they, they are building everything, but they're building a lot of individual houses as opposed to, you know, something that is perhaps a little more urbane. I, I don't know, I just, I just see that as something that just doesn't exist here. And you see it, you see it. I mean, of all places, I'm not saying that we should look like Florida, but you see some really nice communities there. And I don't see anything like that here, you know.
So I think, like if you look in there, I think the TND is the closest to what you're describing.
Somebody's not prohibited from doing what I'm talking about, in other words.
And those things are not currently in the conservation PUD, so.
Okay. So it's not like we ever had it.
No, no.
Not in the conservation PUD. We've never had it. We've, we've never had anything like that.
Yeah, so the, the primary regulations in the, in, the primary, the key points to the conservation PUD was what Jessica said about requiring conservation of seventy percent of the land, requiring someone to demonstrate kind of a minimum, well, demonstrate how you cluster the development to meet a minimum density instead of being like one house, one house, one house. You'd have to put your three closer together to leave the rest open for future development. And the part that's, that's an issue with S-100 or a potential issue is you would, what you would do is shift the density from the back to the, effectively the back to the front. So you, the whole parcel in the SEQ would have the 1.2 units an acre, but there'd be a maximum, I think, six units an acre that you could achieve in that development area by shifting from the back. The issue that we've run into there is that if we left that, you would effectively have to be leaving, it's a little more complicated than this, but leaving the whole thing in the water and sewer service area, which then the, you would, could have someone come in and argue that they should be able to get the state mandated five units an acre for the whole parcel and then shift it to the front, which ends, would, could end up with the parcel that's subject to a conservation PUD having, you know, two, three, four times the density on that front piece of the parcel as the, all of the parcels around it. So from a planning perspective, it wouldn't, it wasn't consistent with what the commission has, has stated in the past as kind of a, an approximate desired level of density along water and sewer service lines.
I'm, I'll put this to rest. I just, what I'm just trying to focus on is we don't seem to emphasize or create any incentive to have an architecturally-designed community. Like, we don't have that here. And I don't know, you know, I mean, that's kind of common among rural places, but, you know, amongst cities, I mean, typically, any city you go to has architecturally-designed communities that are, you know, of a unit designed. We don't have that here. You know, that's, that's the point. I just want to make that point. We don't.
Do you, so Kelsey, correct me if I'm wrong. If it's over ten acres of developable land in the one or two districts, it would be required to do the TND, is that true?
I believe that's how this draft is written.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because it's optional if it's over four acres, but I think it's required if it's over ten acres. Uh, yeah, it's required, yeah. I, I believe it is required. So that's where, you know, ideally, Donna, we would see this because this is something that we've, we've recognized was a problem. We weren't seeing that kind of development.
Traditional neighborhood would be required if the, the developable land is, is over ten acres.
I guess, I guess the issue I have is just.
It hasn't happened.
It hasn't happened yet.
It hasn't happened, so we haven't seen it. And the whole idea of a traditional neighborhood is not at all, I mean, definition-wise, that's not what I'm talking about.
It's not a, it's not the, I agree with you, Donna. It's not the best name to describe what the goal of the, of that PUD type is. Because it does integrate some commercial and mixed, and a little, and some mixed use in specific areas that transitions to, to the, the areas around it, requires sort of linking of public spaces in different ways. And there's a, there's a lot of very specific requirements that are included.
You can have cottage development in a TND.
What, what I'm trying to say is that nothing in any of our LDRs requires any design input from anything higher than a civil engineer. And I think those, that doesn't create the best communities because everything we want would be something that a landscape architect would design into a community. You know, if, you know, if they had, if there was more design input. You know, I think O'Brien used a landscape architect, but almost nobody creating developments in South Burlington utilizes a landscape architect or an architect, you know, in those developments. And it shows, it really shows in our communities because, you know, it, it, it doesn't really feel like a city. It feels like rural land squeezed a little more. You know, little different house types are required, but still no design. You know, and it's, it's not something that comes up with planning, uh, planning commissions very often, but I think that's my role is to say that, look, you're not exact, nothing in Vermont encourages people to use architects. And as a result, our residences don't need code. We don't even have a code for residential design, you know. And that's largely a result is we're not requiring professionals to do residential design. You know, and I'm not saying that it has to be that way, but at least we should encourage it, you know, to have what little land we have left to be more attractively developed. You know, not, not to say that some of the developments being done aren't attractive, but, you know, like it, it could be, it could have a little higher standard of more unified design. But we're not going to solve that tonight.
Okay, so we've kind of been talking about the, the PUDs. Is there general?
Actually, I, I do have a question. It, it looks like in reading the memo, you're looking at possibly the potential of eliminating the conservation PUD and moving some of those into the subdivision standards.
Yeah.
And obviously, I, I see in red, legal review.
Yes, which is ongoing. There's been overlap, overlapping vacations in the last couple of weeks, so.
A legal review right now.
I mean, there's an ongoing legal review, but we're planning to have a, a better meeting early next week.
So I, I guess for, for my own thought process, what are the major pros and cons of keeping the PUD versus eliminating it?
So just to be totally clear, we, we are not proposing to get rid of PUDs in general.
No, no, no.
Just conservation PUDs, okay. Yeah. Conservation PUDs, as I said, the, some of the core pieces of it have been contravened by S-100. So that density shifting part of it, the developer choosing the development area, some of those other things have become more difficult, slightly less legally defensible potentially and have less value than they, than they did before. So effectively, what's left is the permanent conservation requirement. So not only is it NRP land, you'd have, you have to put the permanent conservation easement on the NRP land. That's really the only thing that's left once some of these other things fall out. There's some nuts and bolts things about, you know, only loading one side of the street with homes and not the other side if it's bordering the conservation area. Like there's some other, a few other design things that are easily foldable into street standards in subdivision. But it is, it is not clear and it is more complex than necessary to have a tool that is a skeleton of itself. So that's sort of the recommend, that's what we're talking about is when the conservation PUD, S-100, has pulled out of a lot of the, the things that were at the core of that, of that particular PUD, all you're left with is requiring permanent conservation of the NRP land. That is part of the ongoing legal review about whether if you're not allowing the density shifting from the conserved land to the development land, whether that's legally permissible in a, in a PUD at all or if it's legally, legally permissible in a PUD, is it also legally permissible in subdivision? And so this is going back to statutes and enabling statutes and other things. So that's the big thing is that a lot of the core reasons for why the, the conservation PUD was written in the first place have been kind of stripped out of it because of S-100. And sort of in, in a, an intentional and thoughtful way for the city to be dealing with what the, what S-100 has required. So that's really, that's really the core of it is do you keep a tool around for one of its original purposes? Or do you try to see if you can fold that original purpose into the greater subdivision process? Because as, as Donna sort of alluded to, these, the, the TND is intended to create a specific product. The conservation PUD doesn't have that anymore. And it, and it, the specific product it originally had was development that was effectively the same standards as a subdivision, as a normal subdivision, and then the conservation piece of it. And so it's when, if you could do the front as a regular subdivision and then just set the NRP at a certain place, do you need the conservation PUD anymore? Because it's not creating a specific product. Originally, when the PUD, my understanding is when the PUD discussion was had during IZ, it was framed as having many, several more types, you know, a campus type and a commercial type and some other things. Those never went forward. And so what we're, what we're trying to do now is, is fold a lot of the good ideas. So context analysis, how you can, what kind of waivers and modifications you can get for what reasons and all of these things, and fold them actually into major subdivision so that anyone who's coming into subdivide land that's not doing a TND is doing a major subdivision anywhere in the city. So you're, it's much more predictable and a much more straightforward submission structure and, and review structure than if you had kind of this choice between a PUD and a subdivision that has some minor differences, but not a lot of major differences. Because right now, what we're dealing with somewhat, especially in the conservation PUD and the general PUD, is there are some, there's, it's not clear where the PUD standards override subdivision standards and when you still need to look to subdivision standards or site plan standards. So there's a lot of confusion that we're trying, we're still trying to work through about that. So with the conservation PUD having fairly minimal utility, is it, is it simpler and more straightforward and, and make the regulations more, more understandable to just not have that as a PUD type?
And there's no loss of conservation? Because that's the question that's immediately going to be asked.
So the question, so that's the legal question. That's the core of the legal question. We would say there's no, there is no loss of regulatory conservation. So the NRP would be expanded on these properties to, to match that sort of development, no development line that the developer would have, would have chosen or close enough to where the developer would have. development, no development line that the developer would have, would have chosen, or close enough to where the developer would have chosen. The, we're, what we're still talking about with our legal team is the permanent conservation easement piece of it. So whether regulatory conservation and requiring a conservation lot, so you have to subdivide it from your development area versus having that permanent conservation easement. So that it's sort of a twofold question. One, can you still do the, can we, can the city still require the permanent conservation easement? And if you can, can it be in subdivision or does it have to be in the PUD? So there's sort of, there's sort of three outcomes. There's, you can't require pub, permanent subdivision. You can require permanent subdivision, but it has to be a PUD, or you can require permanent, sorry, permanent conservation. Let me start that over. Permanent conservation, you can either not require it. You can either require it, but it has to be a PUD, or you can require it and that can be in subdivision. And that goes back to the enabling statutes and what the city, what the state allows the city to do. So that's the, why there's been several conversations about this with our city attorney.
So if you, if you did eliminate the conservation PUD, you would just have traditional neighborhood PUD required over ten acres. Anything below ten acres, you could just subdivide or choose it if it's more than four. So you really only have one PUD type, except for the one that applies to existing things.
Yes, effectively, yes. Um, what I would add to that is we are, um, trying to clarify and beef up some of the subdivision regulations. So when you say like, oh, they could just subdivide, it's not just like drawing a grid. There's a lot more standards with, you know, road access and garage location and facing, you know, and this is in site plan as well. Like there's a I, I just don't want the message to be that there wouldn't be any standards anymore. There's, there's very robust standards in for major subdivision and for site plan that would still remain.
Right. But if you were going to do a planned unit development of any type, there's only one type that you do.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. It's not a confused, not a, a mix of two or three or four different types.
Correct.
Right, okay. That makes sense. That makes sense to me.
And I'm for simplification, you know, I'd, I'd like to keep it, keep it simpler because, you know, I, like me, I mean, a lot of people didn't understand why the difference. You know, I understood the, the transfer of development density, you know, in the conservation PUD. And I can understand why we would be getting rid of that, because you don't need it anymore.
Right.
What I still am concerned about is that somebody goes into, um, a piece of property, which is not a flat field. We don't have many flat fields in Vermont. And that if somebody wants to set up a traditional neighborhood, um, you know, lots, you know, streets and lots and things like that, but it doesn't at all conform to the landscape. And there might be some features, even, even in areas, uh, that don't have, uh, conservation that, that, you know, the conservation value, there may be some important elements of a lot. Uh, and certainly, um, Park Road, Park Road was a place that had a lot of those kind of issues. And, you know, there was a, a definite, um, a definite, uh, prominent, um, aspect of that lot was ledge that was right in the middle of the lot. And there happened to be a lot of trees and a lot of vegetation right there. But it didn't seem like it kind of registered with the engineers that they shouldn't just level over that and just build the regular lots. That it's worth conserving that ledge, you know? Also, why destroy something that's actually a site asset? And that's my concern about, you know, about just setting aside, you know, setting up traditional neighborhood lots, potentially on land that doesn't really lend itself to it.
Yeah, so I would, I would qualify that none of this removes any of the protections of Article twelve. So even if you don't have a conservation PUD, you still have to comply with everything to do with wetlands and river corridors and flood plains and habitat blocks, steep slopes and very steep slopes. All of that still applies.
The ledge?
As a steep slope, as a very steep slope.
Flat ledge, it's not protected, but if it's steep ledge.
Right, if it's sort of a cliffy part.
There's a definite drop in, and there's a drop off on the property, but that didn't seem to prevent them from
That was.
From just leveling over it.
That also predated some of this, the Article twelve rewrite from.
I mean, that's sort of the tendency, you know, you've seen it, we've seen on a lot of developments that predated the existing regulations.
I guess, so I guess that's the thing is that, um, the current, most of the current LDRs were, um, amended after the interim zoning process. So approximately November of, October, November, December of twenty twenty one. Um, and the timeline of some of these large developments is, is such that things that are being permitted after that have not been built, um, or, or have not been full, even fully permitted yet because of how it all works. So, um, some of the issues that have been raised to the planning commission and a few of the things that you've mentioned, um, today are things that have been at least partially addressed in that, that update. And we just haven't seen it on the ground yet because of that kind of delay between regulation and, and construction. So I would just say, I would just keep that in, in mind, that you couldn't take, um, a TND would not change like where a habitat block is, or the regulation on very steep slopes or wetlands or whatever else. You'd have, you, they would have to build around some of those things now when they wouldn't have had to for something that was permitted. You know, three, five years ago.
And once we have a tree ordinance, or a tree, a tree part of the LDRs dealing with existing trees.
So.
Protection for trees, you know, especially significant trees.
Yes.
There's, there's all these things that, you know, just like, you know, a, a, a real designer would take these things into account. Laying out a lot, you know, or laying out a neighborhood. But, you know, some of the civil engineers are just, you know, they're, they're not necessarily even getting up a plan that shows all the correct locations of trees on it. So, and they're not, you know, and that gets in the way of putting the maximum lots in. And so I, I don't see how, you know, some of these things, we really have adequate adequate way of protecting.
Yeah, I guess, I guess all I would say is, um, those are all valid concerns and anyone in the commission can, can absolutely correct me on this. Um, they're all very valid concerns. As I said, there's some things that haven't, we haven't seen on the ground come into play yet. Um, and also, uh, they're important topics that are not directly related to these amendments. Um, the tree ordinance is, is again, with the Form Based Code, the ne, on the next sort of over the summer kind of timeline. Um, so all those things are upcoming. Um, but we can't, I would say, just from my perspective, that there's a lot in this LDR amendment already. The intention is for another LDR amendment to come through in the fall. That includes some of these projects from the summer. And we can't deal with all of the concerns in one LDR, uh, amendment. So it's kind of doing things in steps.
I'm excited to see the first TND. With our new Article twelve and like really see how that works, because, you know, I think you're right, we've made some big changes, but haven't gotten to see them yet. I have one comment about conservation PUDs before I move on. I think we might have talked about this before, but, um, these new NRP areas, they're going to be in like a subzone of some kinds. They won't get new TDRs. I just want to make sure we have this TDR issue. We're not going to be creating new TDRs in spots where we don't need to.
We have to figure out exactly the mechanics of that, but, but yes.
Like a NRP.
As of date this or. Or TDRs for properties that were on, that had NRP as of X date or, or something along those lines.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I think that that would address, um, some of what I think you had brought up at the last meeting, that, that like a new, like a, a property that just came into existence recently. Maybe was never expecting TDRs or, you know, new NRP, so. Okay, any more discussion about the conservation PUD at this point? Um, okay, straw poll, are you in favor of, um, the elimination of the conservation PUD? Therefore using the subdivision standards and trying to have the required, um, the NRP land be permanently conserved?
I'm brutally honest, I'm still not quite clear on how it's all going to work, so.
Yeah, so. And, and that's fine. I mean, we don't have language on this. Um, some of the other things that we've done straw polls, it's all language.
You have some language, yeah.
So this seems like maybe something to keep exploring.
Absolutely.
I, I don't feel comfortable voting on something I'm not.
No, no, I think that's completely valid.
It's not something that unfortunately that we could give more clear guidance on, because we don't have that more solid opinion from, um, legal counsel. It's also a bit of a, um, there's always with legal advice, it's kind of how much risk are you willing to tolerate? To kind of, like if, if, if legal counsel says, oh, there's, you know, it's a pretty good idea to keep this or not keep this and you have a, you know, if you were sued about it, you have a fifty percent chance of winning versus you have a ninety percent chance of winning versus you have a ten percent chance of winning. That is, it's also part of that legal opinion. It's like, here's the legal opinion about whether you can do it and here's how strong that opinion is. So if some of that comes to the commission, um, the buck stops with that, with the city council. So that also would be, they would be advising city council about sort of the risk tolerance, um, on some of these kinds of questions. So that's what we're hoping to work through in the next, um, week or two and, uh, be able to give a better, some better guidance. There's, as of today, the, the, the answer is there is no black and white answer. It's not a simple, extremely clear, you'd always win if you did this kind of answer, um, on this question. So it's all of that shades of gray. Peace.
I mean, I, I want to be clear, I'm completely in, in favor of simplifying this whole thing, but I'm not clear on.
No, totally acceptable. In fact, a straw poll is maybe too, too preliminary to really do that. So I think we talked through the PUD items. Um, then we have the section on subdivision and site plan. With a few, um, suggestions here.
Yeah, some of this is related to the PUD items, because, um, part of what PUDs historically in co, in South Burlington have been used for is some of this more modification and flexibility, um, ability. We, it's, it's sort of as crea, it, it prev, previous to interim zoning, it created a situation. A lot of developments were just PUDs, so they could get some of these modifications of the general standards. We're talking about moving that modification in waiver, um, process from PUD into general subdivision. Um, but having really clear, really clear standards and reasons why you get certain kinds of modifications. And, and that would include moving, um, the context analysis requirement from PUD into general subdivision or mass, a major subdivision in, in particular, to be able to have more predictability and have all of the subdivision regulations apply clearly to subdivisions that aren't TNDs. And, and be really clear about how you get modifications, because right now there's two sort of waiver processes, one in subdivision and one in PUD. And there's a lot of confusion about when you can use one or the other, and if you can use both on the same development, and there's a lot of stuff. So it's connected to the PUD question of, can we move some of the good parts of PUD just into major subdivision and have it apply to anybody doing major subdivision? That's sort of the big takeaway on, on the subdivision side.
That's good.
The other things, um, S one hundred allows municipalities now to have administrative review of minor subdivisions. So that's, it's generally very small, very simple subdivisions. I forget exactly what the standards are, but it's basically you have to be two lots and pretty small to be a minor subdivision. So having that be administrative would, would allow some, some of the things we've talked about in previous weeks about small lots or, or medium sized lots being, be able to subdivide into two small lots, like having that process be streamlined because it's administrative review and not DRB. Um, so that was allowed by the state in S one hundred. So we're just put that in as something we would, we would like to take from, from S one hundred. And then the other thing is, uh, multiple principal buildings on a lot. It was at one point allowed in South Burlington and then it became sort of the primary reason that people would do a PUD is they would want, that they wanted to have multiple buildings on a lot. Um, there have been some recent examples where that's been the major sticking point, because related to other things with density and lot size that are not what we're talking about today. But, um, there have been a few development proposals that have been stuck on this because they couldn't create lots in a certain, of a certain size and in a certain rela, arrangement. So we were talking about allowing multiple struck, multiple buildings on a lot, not requiring that to be a PUD. Um, and then demonstrating some level of, of future ability to subdivide. So maybe not demonstrating your, the entire subdivision application at the, you know, very detailed level that you need to do to actually subdivide, but to meet some of those basic requirements of lot area, safe and appropriate access, um, potentially setbacks between those multiple buildings that you could in the future draw a line between them, um, but not require every, um, aspect to be made. Because then you're effectively applying for subdivision and that doesn't streamline anything. So, um, that was the proposal about allowing multiple principal buildings on a lot. So it still would be physically possible in the future, but not requiring people to do it right now.
Yeah, we've had some examples come up.
Yeah.
Where I've been.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions on those items? I guess no need for a straw poll, because it's a little early. These are just concepts, so, um, master plan items.
Um, so the master plan items, the very specific things is right now, a master plan is required for any major subdivision. And any PUD is a major subdivision under our rules, so it required all PUDs and all major subdivisions to have a master plan. That created situations where fairly small and fairly simple projects were required to go through a sort of tens of thousands of dollars process of doing a master plan, um, in situations where it didn't make a lot of sense. Um, so what we boiled the master, master plan down to is, um, developments that are proposed to be in multiple phases or over a certain number of years, which is already one of the requirement, one of the things in master plan. And, or if the DRB determines that there's clear future development potential for, sort of for the rest of the lots. Like say you decided you have forty acres and you're only going to subdivide three acres in the front into three home lots or something. The DRB could say, no, you need to master plan the rest of it, because you have such, there's huge development potential on the rest of the property. So we thought that that ca, captured the, the essence of the master plan and what master plans are really needed for and desired for is being able to plan multiple phases or over, you know, five, ten years, like long-term projects. But not catching, um, some of these smaller, more simpler things in the master plan net. And then, so then setting, so right now the, the duration, so how long a master plan lasts is a variable duration that the DRB can decide. We had a discussion about this and landed on there's not really a reason to have a, a variable, um, duration. It's, it's a lot more straightforward to just have a set number, um, instead of the DRB having to have that, um, discussion about sort of length of, of master plan. And then also to declare, relatedly clarify what happens at the expiration of a master plan, if it can be amended, how it can be amended, if it has to be fully reapplied for, all of these sort of nuts and bolts, um, process questions. Um, including whether you're, what sorts of approvals that were made under the master plan for like a site plan or a subdivision. What things would survive the expiration of the master plan as a whole? Like, are you vested in the subdivision that you got permitted under the master plan once the master plan expired? And the answer is yes, but for that particular example, but making all of that really clear in the master plan section.
So what is the expiration date of a master plan? How, how many years?
So right now it's variable, um, and I'm not remember, I'm actually not remembering the specific number. I can go, I can go look at it. But I believe it's like six years and you, but then you can get extensions or you can get two extensions, but, and then it's up to ten years. Like there's some varying, but you. you could have them, the DRB approve your master plan for only five years and then have extensions up to, you know, so it's a lot of moving parts in that sort of six to 10 year ballpark.
So, I mean, does, six years doesn't feel very long for, for a big development. So I'm just wondering if, if some major regulation comes along at the end of six years and the master plan doesn't comply with it, does that mean that the DRB can say, okay, that's, you got, you have to come up with a new master plan after six years?
If it is expired, yes. So the flip side of the master plan that the developers get is they get vested in their original, in the rules under which it, they had been, under which they had applied for the master plan. So effectively they lock in their LDRs for the duration of the master plan. But once it expires, you're back, you're right back on the current rules. So.
Certain elements.
Yeah.
But it's not, yeah, it's not every single thing in the whole LDR. It's.
Right.
Portions that are specific to like what's included in the master plan, so.
So number of units, I mean, I could, I could see potentially somebody finding out that they had a development that, you know, was going to have 20 homes and now it could have, it could have six, you know.
Eighty.
It could have eighty.
They can always.
They can always. So can they come back and voluntarily say, okay, we're going to.
You can, you can always resubmit, you can always, before your master plan expires, just start over, resubmit it if, if the changes are in your favor. But what it does is for some of these long-term projects that could change over time, what you're doing is you're allowing a property to apply to meet the regulations for, usually what happens is they apply for site plan or subdivision or both for their first phase, and then the master plan for phases, you know, two, three, four, five, whatever it is. So they do the hyper detailed stuff for the things that they're building in the next two years. And then they have, you know, blank boxes and an access road and, and more than that. But, you know, basic access, building type, land use type, if it is a commercial, is it residential, and, and some additional things for those further phases. But the specific, you know, glazing standards or lighting standards are not fully mapped out for the full site. So that's the intention of the master plan is you get, you get to plan your whole, you plan your whole site, so then the city approves that whole thing, and then it's not going, the, the city's not going to pull the rug out of a developer and say, oh, actually now we've changed everything and what you planned to do, you can't do, and now your whole project falls apart for whatever reason. But if it expires, then, then that's where you are.
Any questions from anyone on this audience, or if you're joining us online, you can turn your mic on.
Oh, and I can stop sharing so people can, I can see.
Anyone to see if we're missing anyone. Okay. Any more thoughts or questions up here? I guess we can talk about Appendix E, which is item seven on the agenda.
Yeah, so Appendix E is something that came directly from our development review team as some cleanup of the submission requirements. It is cleaning up the submission requirements for the standards that, for all of the regulations as they currently stand. So there may be some further tweaks to this, because I did get it from them a little while ago. But generally speaking, there's just, there's some very process related technical things that they've run into as, as issues in actual applications.
Okay. Does anyone see anything in here that seemed, because this actually is in the packet at the very end.
This is that, this is that very detailed set of charts that you can't actually see unless you zoom in on it.
I couldn't, I could not figure out a better way to provide it in PDF form, limited by, here, let's see if I can make it big on the screen.
You have to kind of like mark your spot visually and then zoom in, it's kind of like a exercise in dexterity.
Here we go. So some, so this red, red is stuff that the, yeah, there's some things down here, too. Some of it is that there were several requirements or several things that you had to submit that were effectively the same, or provided such similar information that it wasn't very helpful, or was very difficult to predict kind of before application. Like I'm just looking here at some of these excavation and sediment control plans, there's a few things that duplicate. There's a few things that are hyper-specific that, you know, the, the, am I going to lose my page here? No, there's some more. Just cleaning up, do you need to write something in narrative form? Do you need to put it in a map? Like something like a landscaping plan in written form is not helpful, where landscaping form and map form is, is helpful. Let's see what else. Yeah, so some of these things are like, if you ask for a landscaping plan and then you ask for these sort of five other things that are all still landscaping plan, then it gets, you start duplicating a lot of things. So this is, this is our, our development review staff, this is Marla Keen, cleaning up issues that she's run into. Or clarifying specific language that's not, you know, it's not sort of current best practice for what things are called. Consistency with the regula, the current regulations, some of these pieces of the submission requirements were not updated when the LDRs were updated, so it doesn't require, it requires sort of slightly different things or things that are not engineering best practices to be providing in a plan set. Trying to see if there's anything else that I'm missing. I think some things that were sort of listed in a list of many things that needed to be more specifically called out, like pump stations, transformers, et cetera. Typos, there's a handful of small typos. Yeah.
The one that, that stretched out the location of all open spaces to be dedicated to the city as well as all open space to be retained by the applicant of the held on common private ownership. They don't want that ahead of time?
I think my understanding is that the, the development review board is not, doesn't have the authority to approve some of the, yeah, some of the dedication to the city and also that would be shown on a general site plan anyway. So calling it out as a separate item wasn't, it would be, it would be on a map, the open spaces would be mapped in the general subdivision layout or site plan. But identifying city dedication or, or whatever else was a little more sort of property ownership, property rights related.
Yeah, so it's, here is their number, of course, there's no number. Open space is one of the upper, it's, it's a different line. Like maybe, well, actually now that I zoom out, it somehow looks like it's the middle of the.
Is it? I found it.
Oh, yeah, the bottom. Oh, actually, it's listed twice, it's, it's the second up from the bottom and then.
It's those, some of those things.
Halfway down as well, because up here it says, no, I lost it. So, so up above it even says copy of proposed deeds, deed restrictions, governments, agreements or other documents showing the manner in which open space, including park, recreation, school site areas are to be dedicated, reserved and maintained.
So.
Yeah, I pulled that up on the screen. That was crossed out in two spots. Oh, yeah, Kelsey found it.
Yeah. So this is sort of the legal things, and then there's the site plan showing all the different pieces of the thing. So in combination, you didn't need that other one.
I see they, they added the, the measurement of height from ground with that new definition we have.
That was one of those consistency with, yeah, that was one of the consistency with the current LDRs problems.
Okay, anything you kind of wanted to point out very specifically on here?
No, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of cleanup, there's really not policy decisions being made here, it's, it's sort of functionality of this list and making it clear what needs to be its own document, what's included in other documents, and cleaning up some typos, making sure that the language was consistent with the current LDRs, as you said, with some things that had been updated. A little more specific, like for example, solar ready roof analysis report, instead of that, it's just written a little bit differently. And I think those are, my understanding from Marla is those are for consistency with what engineers actually produce, instead of kind of making up a new document that shows the same information. Well, now I'm zooming out by accident, that's not what I meant to do. Woo, now I've gone off.
Ooh, you're under minutes.
I'm under minutes, so here we are. Yeah, no, there wasn't anything in, any, anything specific unless anyone has any questions, like, like Helen's specific question.
Okay, anything else on this Appendix E? All right. We covered a lot tonight. There's also maybe some details in the fine print that we didn't dive into specifically, so.
Yeah, so.
So we're going to be back onto LDR updates with the updated version and some additional topics coming up.
Yep, so there'll be some more information we'll be able to provide for the May 14th meeting, which is, the April has five Tuesdays this month, so we have an extra week in between, so we don't see you for a few weeks. It's actually the latest that it could be in May to have your first meeting, I think that's right, May 14th. So we've, we would hopefully have the mapping, we would have some additional mapping, some additional clarification on the actual language of Article 15, and anything specific in, if there's any additional topics, and then anything specific in the written red line, we'll, we'll resend all of that to you all, so you can just read it all, all over again. Because there were a few things that were, that we are going to be tweaking in the next week or two, resulting out of last week's meeting and this week's meeting. So those are the big things. And as Jessica said at the beginning, if any commissioners have anything specific that they would want, that they think hasn't been discussed and want to raise, feel free to send me an email, it would be great to get that. I guess in the next week, sort of by next Tuesday, it would be great to have a heads up on things that you would, would like to discuss further in, in this particular LDR packet, understanding that there are future LDR amendments as well that were in the works for the summer. And also transportation demand management and EV charging will be coming back around. We have to work on whether that's scheduled for the next meeting or the second in May, but we'll be, we'll be doing that as well. And then also scheduling public, an additional public feedback, public listening session on these LDR amendments. That's the big preview for the next couple of weeks, next month or so.
Then we have minutes from March 19. I motion that we pass the minutes from March 19.
Second.
Okay, for a second, any discussion? Hey, on favor? All right? Okay, they pass, and any other business? Okay, then we can adjourn and it is early somehow.
Wow, how do we do that?
I know, because we only had a few minutes, oh my God. I appreciate his sternness, but I do get frustrated.